Well, good evening. What a turnout this evening. We expect you to come next week and, and next week and next week. Again, thank you, thank you for being here. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order and for the regular meeting of October fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Keep in mind, these meetings are being recorded and transmitted live for the benefit of our residents who can't be with us in person this evening. So with that, I'll do the invocation and I'm going to ask Director Christina Cuzavas to lead us into place, if you don't mind. Oh my God, we come this evening first thanking you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for our health and our strength and thank you for this amazing community as it grows and prospers. Father, we thank you for this board. Give them wisdom, knowledge and understanding and may the work they do benefit this city from every segment of our community. Father, we thank you for this day. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unregard and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
George Cuzavas.
Here.
Christina Cuzavas.
Here.
Settle.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask if there's any board member that have an item to be placed on agenda that's not, that's not already on the agenda, please note it. Yes, sir, Mr. Rego.
I had just wanted, thank you, sir. I just wanted to let my colleagues in the audience know, I have to leave at about six forty-five tonight for a family commitment. Thank you.
And I thank Director Settle.
I have a family commitment also. My daughter plays for Southside, Northside, Southside Volleyballs tonight, so some point tonight I will be leaving for that tonight.
Okay, what we'll do, we will, we will handle the business of the city and we will do it as expeditionously as possible, okay? Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll ask for approval of the September twenty, September twenty-third meeting.
So moved.
Special meeting.
Second.
And regular meeting.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm the only aye.
Yeah.
You were just too quick. Aye.
Okay. At this time, we would ask for, this time, we would ask for a, we've got that, okay, thank you. This time, we'll go directly to the agenda and the first item on the agenda is the presentation of the two thousand and twenty-six proposed operating budget. And so, it's a presentation only, no, no board action will be required on this, so we're just going to hear from those that are responsible for putting this budget together for us. Mr. Dingman, you're recognized.
For some brief comments on what's distributed to the board this evening, introduce Chief Financial Officer Randy Richards.
Good evening. We did hand out the budget for two thousand and twenty-six. Should be in your hands at this point, so the main book, just want to remind everyone, this is the, this is the budget document that's in this bound copy that you have. So it'll have, it'll have all the summarized budget information for the four operating funds and then detailed expenditure line totals for each of the budget programs will be there, but the actual individual budget line item detail that we've presented to you in the past is in the big binder that you have, so now, you know, typically you want to focus on this in itself and then refer to the, to the, the big book for individual items that, that make up the budget line items. It is a little bit different, we've kind of, I think we've mentioned this in previous sessions when we've talked about preliminary, about the two thousand and twenty-six budget. This year, we do have the capital outlay request for the operating funds are built into this budget, where in the past, we've considered those items later on after you've passed your original budget, so we did that differently this year. The detail for that, we didn't get it, we didn't get the budget reformatted to break that out, but I have supplementary information that I'll be sharing with the board members to show you the difference between the operating, how the operating expenditures impact the results and as well as the capital. And I know we've, there's been requests for the capital list, I'll send an updated list out to you as well to help you consider the capital items that are considered part of that. You'll see capital in the program budgets, it's broken out in the back there, but for the summaries in this big book, you know, you won't be able to see that, so, but I'm, I've got additional information to, to get to you to help support those, that information.
Okay, Director Christina Cuzavas, you're recognized.
Andy, what is your level of confidence that we can get to a balanced budget? Because that's, that's what I'd like to pass is a balanced budget.
My level of confidence, not very high.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for?
Well, I think, to your point, I think we can get there. I think it's up to us, so, I think we can get there, so, that's what I'll, I think we ought to strive for.
Okay. Director, I mean, Mr. Dingman, you're recognized.
I might add to that, that of course, the, we have a target of November the fourteenth to meet again with the budget in a, in a general session to review everything and by that time, we intend to have recommendations for reductions and such to this preliminary budget so that we can get to, to we can get to milestones where we have the appropriate fund reserve balances and if, and if we're able to achieve a balanced operating budget, then we'll try to get there as well.
No, just elaborate on my statement just a little bit, probably worth a little bit of commentary, but, I mean, we, we discussed the budget with the departments individually since we've presented preliminary information and, you know, I think there was a really good effort to shave the budget and the line items among departments, both in our twenty-five results as well as the twenty-six budget, so, and I think that, you know, you'll see that there's been, there's been progress made in that direction. The other, but on the flip side, we've had to consider the cost of our health insurance, the cost to the city, we've had to revise that estimate upward, so that's another issue. And so, you know, my confidence level indicates that, you know, in order to get a balanced budget for twenty-six, I think some really hard choices are going to have to be made. I'm afraid it's going to impact our level of service across the board, so, you know, it's going to take a lot of hard choices, I think, to make by us and the board to balance it, to get revenues and expenditures equal. I mean, I've just, unfortunately, inflation and cost increases have made it very difficult to, for our revenues to cover our expenditures, especially in the general fund, but it's impacting other funds as well.
Thank you. Director Settle.
Andy, does this budget include assumption that every position is filled for the full year?
Yes.
And it's assumed that at a certain, so, why don't you come back and say, because we know we're normally at ninety-four, ninety-one percent, if they can, you know, rate of employment, there's eight, nine, ten percent unemployment openings, why don't you base it off of that and then tell us the board that's what you did, so we can see what that is? Because I don't want to go try to make cuts when I'm trying to fill positions that aren't truly going to be filled for one or two, three, four months.
Well.
Because I don't want to assume, I don't assume the worst case, because we know every position's likely to be filled January first.
Sure. The vacancy, the vacancy calculations, the most recent ones that I've seen total about three point eight million dollars for citywide, so, I mean, that's, that's significant dollars, but that's, you know, the, the biggest impact, the vacancy, I think, is the water and sewer fund. The general fund, it probably impacts at about half a million dollars or four hundred and forty thousand dollars, something like that, that's what I remember. So, I mean, that, that is a good thought, but right now, those numbers don't really realize a lot of savings where we need to go.
Okay, thank you.
Good thing. Director George Cuzavas.
Hey, Andy, what, let me ask you, I just, tell me what, I just recently learned that we're paying a lobbyist one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. What department is that paid out of and what line item is it? I don't remember seeing that for years, in the years.
You could probably answer that, yeah.
I'll address that, that is a, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar lobbyist fee paid out of the city administrators outside services program.
Paid out of city administrators?
City administrators program.
Okay, which is what?
I'm sorry, which is what?
Who, who controls that money?
The city administrator.
The city administrator, but does that have to be approved by the board, our lobbyists?
It does and it was. It was in the budget.
It was hidden pretty good. All right, thank you.
The contract would have been approved as well.
The what?
The contract would have been approved by the board as well.
As a lot of money, as a lot of money being expensed?
Yeah.
Don't remember that?
Yes, and I would say respectfully, that's pretty reckless language.
What?
Director Cuzavas.
What?
Saying something's hidden, because there's not a recollection or there's not a understanding or there's not a familiarity, does not mean something is hidden from people.
Well, I guarantee you the recycling for three years is hidden.
We're talking about a contract for a lobbying firm, not the recycling issue.
But I'm trying to understand that we, we're not privy to every expense there is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rego, you were next in queue, did you have any further comments? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for our finance people? Okay, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
This time, we'll go to item number two.
The next several items on the agenda are related to annexation of about forty-five acres into the corporate limits of the city of Fort Smith. Deputy City Administrator Maggie Rice will introduce the six ordinances relevant to this action.
Yes, state law allows for island annexation when a city completely surrounds an unincorporated area. This island annexation contains approximately forty-five acres and is located in the area of Highway two seventy-one and Texas Road. It includes twenty parcels, nine residential and eleven non-residential. The Arkansas Legislature adopted Act three fourteen abolishing extraterritorial jurisdictions. In the absence of an ETJ, the city no longer exercises land use control over the enclaves. On August nineteenth, the public hearing was held for property owners within the proposed area for annexation. No property owner spoke during the public hearing. In compliance with state law, staff published the legal description of the area to be annexed as well as mailed certified letters to the, to the owners of all twenty parcels within the enclave notifying them of the public hearing and their right to present their views on the proposed annexation. City staff hosted two public input sessions for property owners within the area proposed for annexation. The two meetings were attended by approximately fifteen property owners. In addition, staff met one-on-one within, with property owners to explain the process and answer questions. There is a list of benefits and impacts to property owners within the packet and I'll be happy to answer any questions on the actual annexation ordinance. There is, there was a revised annexation ordinance that was sent out this afternoon and it clarified, there was a clerical error, error on the exhibit within the ordinance and that has been fixed.
Thank, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rule.
So moved with suspension of the rules. Second.
As revised, please, as revised, Madam Clerk.
As revised.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance annexing certain lands that are surrounded by the incorporated limits of the city of Fort Smith in the Arkansas-Oklahoma boundary line and for other purposes.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we entertain any comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Item B, two B.
Yes, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications for the properties that are listed within the packet. This is item two B within the packet. The subject properties contain an area of approximately twenty acres and are west of U.S. Highway two seventy-one, east of Texas Road and east of State Line Road. The proposed master land use plan amendment and rezoning are comparable to the former ETJ classifications allowing the properties to be annexed with similar zoning. No neighboring property owners or, proper, no neighboring property owners attended the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend that the master land use plan amendment and zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
So moved with suspension of the rules. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map.
Thank you, any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
We'll go to item D in that, in item two, go ahead.
Yes, sir, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The subject properties contain an area of approximately ten acres. The proposed master land use plan amendment and rezoning are comparable to the former ETJ classifications. No neighboring property owners attended the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend that the master land use plan map and zoning map be amended subject to the following conditions. A six-foot tall opaque privacy fence must be installed adjacent to any properties developed for residential use. A two-hundred-foot-long evergreen screening buffer shall be planted along the north boundary of the subject property, beginning two hundred and twenty feet from Texas Road, and the area in security lighting will be installed so as to not create any adverse effect to surrounding residential areas.
Okay, thank you very much. Any citizen comments?
None indicating.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
So moved suspension of the rules. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the, the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map.
Okay, any comments from the board? Please call the roll.
Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
We'll go to item D in that, in item two, go ahead.
Yes, sir, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The subject properties contain an area of approximately thirteen and a half acres. The proposed master land use plan amendment and rezoning will give these properties comparable zone, in-city zoning to what they were formerly within the ETJ. No neighboring property owners attended the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the master land use plan amendment and zoning map be amended subject to the following. No vehicular access from Texas Road is permitted and the container storage areas shall be screened.
Okay, thank you. Are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
Okay, motion to adopt the ordinance with the suspension of the rules.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
I'm sorry, who moved? Okay. An ordinance amending the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map.
Any board comments? Please call the roll.
Directors George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
E.
Yes, sir, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The subject property contains a little over a half acre and is located on the west side of U.S. Highway two seventy-one, north of Mesa Drive and south of School Street. The proposed master land use plan amendment and rezoning are comparable to the former ETJ classifications allowing the properties to be annexed with similar zoning. No neighboring property owners attended the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend that the master land use plan map and zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you, any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
Motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map.
Are there any board comments? Please call the roll.
Directors Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, F.
Yes, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The subject property contains an area of approximately five acres and is located on the east side of Texas Road. The proposed master land use plan amendment and rezoning are comparable to the former ETJ classifications. This property is located at eighty-one twenty-one Texas Road. There were no neighboring property owners that attended the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend that the master land use plan map and zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you, any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance with the suspension of the rules.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we do have a second, Director George Cuzavas. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map, and this is for property at eighty-one twenty-one Texas Road.
Any board comments? Please call the roll.
Directors Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
This time, we'll go to item number three.
Item number three is an ordinance rezoning property at six thousand and one Prairie Drive, Ms. Rice?
Yes, on September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The property containing an area of two point two acres is located on the east side of Prairie Drive, south of Zero Street. The proposed master land use plan amendment to office research and light industrial and zoning to industrial light will allow the existing twenty-three thousand square feet building to be utilized as an electrical, plumbing, heat and air conditioning wholesale trade establishment. A neighborhood meeting was held on September third, there were no neighboring property owners in attendance. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Jake Chavis was present to represent these applications. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition. The Planning Commission voted eight in favor with, and zero opposed to recommend the master land use plan map and zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you, any citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
So moved, suspension of the rules. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the master land use plan map, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map, and this is for property located at six thousand and one Prairie Drive.
Okay, thank you, any board comments? Just, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Directors Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
This time, we need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, item number four.
This is an ordinance rezoning properties and creating a PZD in the sixty-two hundred block of Mazar Road, Ms. Rice?
On September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider rezoning property at sixty-two ten, sixty-two twenty, sixty-two twelve, sixty-two thirty and sixty-two thirty-four Mazar Road, from commercial moderate special or a C-three special to a planned zoning district. The proposed zoning to a planned zoning district will allow for a reduced minimum lot area, minimum lot width and minimum building setbacks while increasing maximum lot coverage on three individual lots with a unified commercial development while defining a shared open space tract. A neighborhood meeting was held on September second, there were no neighboring property owners in attendance. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Connor Threet was present to represent these applications. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition. The Planning Commission voted seven in favor with zero opposed to recommend that the zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you, any citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
We do have Mr. Connor Threet here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you for being here, sir. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
So moved, suspension of the rules. Second.
Thank you, please read the ordinance.
This is an ordinance, rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map, and this is for properties located at sixty-two ten, sixty-two twenty, sixty-two twelve, sixty-two thirty and sixty-two thirty-four Mazar Road.
Thank you, any board comments? If not, please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
We need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Cuzavas.
Yes.
Christina Cuzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven in favor and zero opposed. twenty Prairie Drive. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. On September ninth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject Master Land Use Plan Amendment and rezoning applications. The property containing a little over six acres is located on the west side of Prairie Drive. The proposed Master Land Use Plan Amendment and to office research and light industrial and zoning to industrial light will facilitate the construction of a thirty-five thousand square foot electrical, plumbing, heat, and air conditioning wholesale trade establishment. A neighborhood meeting was held on August the twenty-eighth. There were no neighboring property owners in attendance. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Wayne Stevenson was present to represent these applications. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition of the items. The Planning Commission voted seven in favor with zero opposed to recommend the Master Land Use Plan and zoning map be amended.
Thank you. Any citizens' comments?
We have Mr. Cole Perry to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry, for being here. At this time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules?
So moved, suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance.
This is an ordinance amending the Master Land Use Plan Map, rezoning identified property, and amending the zoning map, and this is for properties located at six thousand sixty-one hundred and sixty-one twenty Prairie Drive.
Any board comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Directors George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. We need a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Directors Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven in favor and zero opposed.
We'll go to item six.
Item six is the loaned personnel agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell Engineering for staff augmentation services for the engineering department. This item was tabled at the September sixteenth regular meeting pending study session discussion, which happened on September the twenty-third. The proposed amendment tonight has been modified to a three-month term intended to carry us through the end of the year instead of the original proposed six-month term. The associated cost is not to exceed a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one twenty-one and eighty cents. With that introduction, staff will stand for questions from the board.
Okay, thank you. Any citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
None indicating.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt a resolution.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second. This time, we'll go to board, to the board for comments. Director George Katsavas?
Jeff, staff augmentation, can you just explain that?
It means that we are, we are using an employee that is an employee of an engineering firm and not an internal employee.
Not a city employee?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
So, we did have a candidate in last week to fill the spot, or, excuse me, to interview for the spot. Is that the sole, or are there more candidates than that, or?
That is the one that we have currently, and we are, we are continuing with that recruitment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Director Christina Katsavas?
You know, sometimes I worry we get into these contracts, and they're so ambiguous. What kind of benchmarks or reports can we expect from this? What kind of product?
This, this will be, this loaned employee will act as a city employee, and so we will have daily interaction with them, and they will be working through our projects to keep our projects moving.
So what specific projects?
The streets and bridges and drainage, CIP, all of the projects on the streets of CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further question? Director Kemp?
Jeff, could you give us some clarity on if we are to move in hiring said candidate or another candidate before this time expires? Are we able to, is there an escape for us out of this?
Yes, yes. If we, if we, we can, we can discontinue these services. I think there's a five-day notice, if I remember correct.
Okay.
In, in the, in the agreement, but then, you know, that, yes.
So it's not a thirty day, thank you.
That's right.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Directors Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
No.
No.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and one opposed.
Item seven?
Item seven this evening consists of the four millage ordinances that the city must adopt each year in order to fix the rate and levy property taxes upon taxable real and personal property in the city of Fort Smith for the year 2025. City Clerk Sherry Gard will further address this item and answer questions from the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the ordinances before you are your annual ordinance that represent the city's annual levy of eight mills on all taxable real and personal property in the city of Fort Smith for the year 2025, which will be collectible in the year 2026. There are no changes from the previous years. All mills in all categories, general, public library, fire, retirement, and pension, and police retirement and pension, I'm sorry, police retirement and pension are all maxed out with the exception of the public library, and any increase to the public library millage would require a vote of the people.
Okay, thank you. Are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinances with suspension of the rule?
Motion to adopt items seven A through seven D.
Would you want to vote on these?
Altogether.
Batch these?
Yeah, yeah.
Altogether, altogether, suspension of rules.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Item seven A is an ordinance fixing the rate of and levying five mills upon all taxable and real and personal property in the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas, for the year 2025 for general purposes. Item seven B is an ordinance to levy one mill tax upon each dollar of assessed value of taxable real and personal property to be used for maintenance of a public city library pursuant to the provisions of Amendment Number Thirty of the Constitution of the State of Arkansas of eighteen seventy-four, adopted November the fifth of nineteen forty, and for other purposes. Item seven C is an ordinance to levy one mill tax upon each dollar of assessed value in taxable real and personal property for the Police Retirement and Pension Fund pursuant to the provisions of Amendment Number Thirty-one of the Constitution of the State of Arkansas of eighteen seventy-four, adopted November the fifth of nineteen forty, and for other related purposes. And item seven D is an ordinance to levy one mill tax upon each dollar of assessed value of taxable real and personal property for the Fire Retirement and Pension Fund pursuant to the provisions of Amendment Number Thirty-one of the Constitution of the State of Arkansas of eighteen seventy-four, adopted November, November the fifth of nineteen forty, and for other related purposes.
Okay, thank you very much. Keep in mind, we're, we're batching all of these items. Are there any comments from the board?
Mayor, Sherry, these are, these aren't new taxes, they're existing.
That is correct.
A lot of people don't understand that when they hear that.
Yes, that's, this is nothing new.
No tax increase, no nothing.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, Director Neil Martin?
One thing I found interesting, I don't know if this has been in, in previous years when we've approved this, but you can effectively live in the city of Fort Smith and go to Greenwood Schools and pay less than you do in Fort Smith because of the school district. I, I don't, I know, I just, I, I find that difficult.
The city has, we don't affect schools.
You know, that's something you could address with your.
Well, it's, it's the school board, yeah, it's something we, we addressed there, but that's just interesting.
Yeah, there's a lot more, so, okay. Thank you. If there's no further comments from the board, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Directors Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Item eight?
Items eight and nine are related to the same emergency repair of a collapsed sanitary sewer line near the intersection of Cherokee Circle and Lee Avenue. Item eight is an ordinance to authorize agreement and payment to Vortex Services LLC for emergency point repairs to the collapsed line, and item nine is an ordinance to authorize agreement and payment to Craft Reynolds Construction Company for emergency sanitary sewer repairs involving five hundred and eighty linear feet of sewer main and rehabilitation of two manholes. Deputy Director of Engineering Jimmy Johnson will further address this item.
Thank you, Jimmy.
...of approximately four hundred linear feet of collapsed eight-inch sewer main between manholes M-oh-six dash zero-nine-forty and manhole M-oh-six dash nine-thirty, located near the intersection of Cherokee Circle and Lee Avenue. This pipe segment was originally installed in nineteen fifty-five. During a site inspection, staff determined that the traditional open-cut excavation was not possible due to limited access, the depth of the pipe, and the presence of nearby power poles. As a result, staff decided to proceed with a trenchless repair method, specifically the pipe burst method, which would both complete the work efficiently and minimize the disruption to the surrounding area. Proposals were requested from a few contractors currently working in the area on similar projects to quickly rehabilitate the collapsed sewer line using a trenchless method. Vortex submitted the lowest proposal of three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and fifty cent to fully rehabilitate the line using the cured-in-place pipe, or CIPP method. A cost proposal, a tabulation sheet is included for review. Once Vortex began the rehabilitation work, it was discovered that the CIP method would not be feasible due to a service line that had been incorrectly connected to the, the service lines were incorrectly connected to the concrete line many years ago. It was also anticipated by further cleaning, any further cleaning of the concrete line would cause it to further collapse. In fact, we did have one instance where, and wanted a point repairs for us, where the cleaning head of the machine left the pipe and went into the embankment of the trench. As a result, Vortex was asked to complete the two emergency point repairs on the blocked and collapsed sections to restore flow, and a resolution accepting the project and authorizing payment to Vortex Services in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the two point repairs is presented for your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance? Thank you, it's, need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board comments at this time? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, number nine?
This, number nine is the emergency project involves the same four hundred feet mentioned earlier, a hundred and eighty linear feet of four-inch sanitary sewer, sewer service lines, and the rehabilitation of two manholes. Following completion of the two emergency point repairs by Vortex Utility, engineering staff requested a proposal from Craft Reynolds Construction Company to correct the sewer main connection and replace the sanitary sewer main between the two manholes. The proposal was requested because the original two contractor proposals were higher than anticipated. Craft Reynolds Construction Company submitted the lowest proposal of three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars when compared to the originally submitted proposals. Craft Reynolds has completed one consent decree project ahead of schedule and under budget, and is working on another CD project, Project nineteen seventeen, MCO eight sub-basin. Craft Reynolds Construction Company has completed all the required work and submitted an invoice for the complete project, which is concluded for your review. A resolution authorizing final payment to Craft Reynolds Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars is attached for your review.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
We need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any board comments?
I've got, I've got one there.
Yes.
So, Jimmy, I remember when we, when we talked about this back on the nineteenth, there was, I mean, the, the winning bid for Vortex was significantly less than everybody else.
Yes.
Like by a million dollars, if I, if I'm looking at my notes correctly. Craft Reynolds wasn't even on the, wasn't even one of the three.
Right, he was not on, one of the original three proposals.
So, so you're telling me that Vortex and what they did, and Craft Reynolds, still came in less than any of those other two bidders?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Any other board comments? Madam Clerk, call, you may call the roll.
Directors Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, item ten?
Items ten and eleven are resolutions authorizing change order and then final payment on the twenty-twenty-three street overlay reconstruction project twenty-three zero-three dash D, which also included rehabbing sewer lines in accordance with the consent decree. Engineer Ben March will address this item and answer questions from the board.
Hello, as Jeff said, this item ten and eleven here are for the same project. Item ten is for a change order to add forty-nine days. The forty-nine days included forty days for extenuating circumstances dealing with weather conditions. The additional nine days is extra time that was related to a storm pipe that was found during construction to be needing replacement, and we had budget left in the contract, and were able to replace it at the time while they were actually digging up everything else. During this, we were able to complete one point four miles of roadway, impacted Brazil Avenue, Twenty-Eighth Street, Thirty-first Street, Twenty-Eighth Street, Ferguson, and we were also able to do thirteen hundred feet of storm and replace the bridge on Twenty-Eighth Street just south of Flame Gymnastic. And we were also able to combine some of the consent decree work so that we were doubling up and not tearing up the street twice. We replaced line segments on Brazil Avenue, Ferguson Street, Twenty-Eighth, Twenty-Ninth, Thirty-first, and Kennedy Court, and were able to replace or rehab twenty-nine manholes with ten line sanitary sewer line segments. And I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This time, are there any board comments further? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
It's approved, five in favor and zero opposed.
And number eleven, similar project, are there any citizens' comments on eleven?
None indicating.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any board comments? Now, please call and roll.
Directors George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
It's approved, five in favor and zero opposed.
Item twelve?
Item twelve is a resolution accepting completion and authorizing final payment for twenty twenty-three street overlay reconstruction, Phase A, Project twenty-three dash three dash A, which also included sanitary sewer work in accordance with the consent decree. Mr. March?
So this project, it came in under budget and under the contract scheduled amount of time, completed about one point eight miles of roadway, which primarily was on Phoenix Avenue with a little bit on Old Greenwood Road. During this, as Jeff stated, we did some modification for the consent decree work here with forty manholes and about three thousand feet of sanitary pipe. We did that work, and this is included a, there was a change order on this job that was previously approved, where we were able to replace sewer lines on Twenty-Fourth Street, Utica Street, Phoenix Avenue, Brazil Avenue, Jenny Land Road, South Twenty-Eighth Street, and between Zero and McKinley Avenue. And that equaled, yeah, about three thousand feet of pipe. Stand for any questions?
That's, that's good work, good work. Are there any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any board comments? Director Neil Martin?
I will make one comment related to Phoenix. That, that railroad crossing is phenomenal. I mean, it is so smooth, probably best one that we've got in the city, so I appreciate that, good work, but-- Yep. I think, I guess it was Forrest Gump that did the work?
Forrest Gump did the work.
Good, good, good job. If we get, there's other places that we need them to, to do those railroad crossings, but that was awesome.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, please call and roll.
Directors Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
It's approved, five in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you much. At this time, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. There are six items on tonight's consent agenda. We have a resolution authorizing listing city-owned properties for sale. We have a resolution authorizing application to Arkansas Department of Emergency Management for hazard mitigation grant for the Acme Stormwater Project. Resolution authorizing application to Arkansas Department of Emergency Management for hazard mitigation grant regarding a riverbank stabilization project. We have a resolution authorizing application to Arkansas Department of Emergency Management for hazard mitigation grant for the Mill Creek Stabilization Project. We have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, and we have a resolution authorizing final payment on the LED lighting upgrades at Kelly Park.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on any of these items?
Yes, item thirteen A, the Crystal Cadelli.
Okay, Ms. Cadelli, you're recognized.
Good evening, thank you. I, I just want to say how pleased I am to see that this agenda item is continuing to move forward. I think the sooner that we can sell these unused city properties, the quicker that we can use the proceeds to chip away at the ten million dollar deficit that we're facing. You know, as we spoke, you know, as I've said before, the citizens of Fort Smith just can't bear any more burdens in taxes or water and sewer increases to pay for our debts. And, you know, the one thing that I do want to say is that I wish Mr. Rigo hadn't have left, because I do want to address that, you know, I find it very concerning that he calls out a director for questioning how the city is spending our money. I've personally observed many times where department heads have not shown up prepared.
If we could, could we stay only subject of the item?
Well, it, it, it does have to do with the fact that, you know, I think that we need more questions instead of less, because I think that's why we're in the financial state that we're in, and, you know, the people just can't afford it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
That's all.
That's all, okay. Is there any item on the agenda that a board member would like to pull off for further discussion?
I just have a question for A.
You're, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I worked alongside several other people from our community at Hope Park for the removal of the pavilion that's been donated to Hope Campus, and since that has now happened and has occurred successfully, that land is, sits there with a power pole that is no longer even with a meter, and grass that'll need to be mowed, and trash cans that'll need to be emptied. Is this park on our property list, and if not, should we consider adding it to this list? Thank you.
Good question.
Okay.
Yes.
Good question.
If it is and it needs to be, yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions on the consent agenda? Okay? If not, we entertain a motion to adopt all consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, please call and roll.
Directors Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
It's approved, five in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to the officials forum from the mayor's desk. We had a great meeting, great first meeting with the mayor's Youth Advisory Council, a wonderful group of high schoolers numbered close to thirty, and they're going to get a chance to, get an opportunity to study our local government, and our hope is that we will get them involved to the extent that they will stay in Fort Smith and become a part of our leadership. We're very proud of that, and also we had an opportunity to host the ambassador from Finland, and she was in town and spoke at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet. With that, I'll go to Director Neil Martin. Any comments, sir?
Sure, a couple things. Seeing some email traffic around Animal Haven, I'd like to have Animal Haven come present to the board. It's been a while since we've heard from them. I would like to get an update. It looks like we weren't getting the financials. We started getting financials. I'd, I'd like to kind of see where they're at in terms of animal intakes, impoundments, adoptions, all those things, so something similar to what we've had before. Second item is, I wanted to give the board and everybody listening an update as it relates to Baker Tilly and the utilities risk assessment. I shared with, with Administrator Dingman the update from the second of October, but wanted to give everybody just kind of an update as of yesterday. So Baker Tilly submitted the assessment surveys to all identified participant, participants, and there's probably a hundred, hundred and fifty people that they've submitted the, the risk assessment, the utilities risk assessment for. So I saw that list, there's, there's quite a few people there, not only from utilities but from, from other areas. Next steps are, today was, or actually yesterday was supposed to be the deadline to respond. The, the response rate was, is probably a little less than what they expected, so they'll probably, I think it'll get extended a little bit, but they were about twenty-five percent as of yesterday, and so, Mr. Dingman, I would encourage you to encourage department heads to make sure that folks fill out this survey to get a higher response rate. Now, she anticipated, I think it was closing today, she anticipated having more responses today, but as of the thirteenth, we were, we were fairly low, so we need to get that in. Department heads, thank you for doing that. And then next steps would be, they're going to be receiving those survey responses and begin incorporating that into the risk matrix while analyzing the data as well. So that's kind of where we're at, the, the risk assessment's out, getting results, then they're going to start analyzing those results as it relates to utilities. So that's happening there. I can share that with, I'll share that with Mr. Dingman, so you guys have it in an email, but I wanted you to be aware of that. The one thing, the one thing I'll make mention of, you know, we're right in the middle of a government shutdown, a federal government shutdown, and, you know, I think it's important for us to realize as we go and do our budget, there's a lot of people that are impacted by this federal government shutdown, and, you know, a lot of that, you know, I'm, I'm flying here in the next couple of days, and TSA is impacted by that, but I think it's important for us to understand that the, the, and I guess I heard it today, that the bigger government gets, the more impactful these kinds of shutdowns are. So I would, I would say that we take that spirit into our budget discussions over the next couple of weeks, and we, we bring, obviously we've got a deficit as it sits today in a preliminary, preliminary budget, but we need to take that and pull that back to where we're positive, balanced is even. We need to be positive to build up our, our reserves and, and a number of those other funds, so that's my, that's my challenge for the board. So I think that's all I have at this point, unless some other things come up during the remainder of the officials forum.
Okay, if something comes up, you just give me a nod. Director Christina Katsavas?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Director George Katsavas?
Yes, sir. Jeff, what, this lobbyist, I'm still on that, what, what kind of return are we getting on our investment?
We get regular updates from the lobbying firm. We have entered into that agreement. I don't know if you remember, I was trying to recall, if you remember the, the meeting that we had over here where the lights went out? That's when we approved that contract with that, with that lobbying from the Roosevelt Group. They are specifically geared towards military affairs, and so with the advent of the FMS project and our involvement with the Department of Defense and the Air Force, they have been integral in our interactions with the Pentagon and the military branches, so.
Okay. A major company called me today, and they want to know how they can put in for putting the slides up at the, at the water park.
That, that project is currently out for bid, and we are taking bids on that. I think the bids are intended to open on Friday.
Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is the county charging us to store the slides?
I'm sorry, are they--
Are they charging us to store the slides there?
No, sir. No, sir.
They're not charging us any?
No, sir.
Okay, and the last thing, you know, we were going to get a lease agreement with the county on the water park.
That, that is an item that's pending, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Kemp?
None, thank you, Mayor. I have none.
Okay, Director Good?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items, and just because Director Martin brought up Fort Smith Animal Haven coming and presenting, I want to remind the board that during these presentations, when these groups come to us and make a presentation, particularly Fort Smith Animal Haven, we already know, as we've heard previously, that they are and have been in full capacity for quite some while, off and on. So as a board, you know, listening to Fort Smith Animal Haven is fine, but we need to have some type of thoughts, processes, how we're going to adjust, how we're going to fix the problem moving forward, because we can hear and hear reports all day long, but until we're ready to make a decision on how to better address our animal issues, because we know, you know, out of the many things that we have done and said and put in place and policy-wise, that, sorry to say, poor, you know, animal, what's the word I'm looking for, ownership is the problem, and we can't continue to rely on Fort Smith Animal Haven to fix the problem. We're going to have to make some hard decisions on how we'll move forward to help the process. Secondly, I didn't really want to thank the folks that come out. We have regular folks that do come out, but for those folks, particularly my wife and the youth that came out with the NAACP, I really want to point that out. I want to say thank you, folks, for being here, not only in support of me, but in support of all of our rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Neil Martin, did you have anything else?
We, we did, when we were in DC, we did have a couple of things that we, when we talked to the Roosevelt Group, they did talk about a couple of things, like a recognition of the unmanned aircraft and air guard briefing on the FMS, along with a tour of the base for the board, and then maybe a proclamation for those countries that are coming as they come, like Finland is here now, Poland is, has already been here, is here. Get, you know, putting a proclamation together, you know, recognizing them and their impact on our, on our city.
And we have to keep in mind that even after the military and Department of Defense selected Fort Smith to handle that mission, the state of Michigan fought tooth and nail to get that mission, and the consulting group was able to stay close to that, all of that, and make sure that they didn't change directions, and so we're well underway. If you're not familiar with the Polish, the guys from Poland are training. The four aircraft you see flying now belong to the Polish Air Force, and so we're well underway, and I spoke to, had a chance to meet with the head of the Corps of Engineers for the state of Arkansas, and they're responsible for the construction out on the base. I wasn't aware of that. I always associated them with the river, but they're responsible for the construction out on the base, and they're well underway of getting that project done, so it's going to be an amazing project, and we're looking for members of the Singapore Air Force to start showing up probably later this year, early next year. A big part of their--